We'll call our June 18 meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Walmsley.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton, here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to sit up and stand for the invocation. Give an outback. Pastor Jason Ball of Life Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance with the United States Flag.
Would you pray with me? Lord, we are reminded, reminded a lot lately that our world needs you, and the state needs you, and this city needs you. And I thank you for the men and women that you've put in place to govern us. I pray that you give them wisdom and discernment, and, Lord, I pray that we lift up the name of Jesus and draw all others to you. I ask that you bless this time and be with us today, in your name and all God's people's name.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, two to fly. The United States is here. To the public, today. One nation under God, in thy fold, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jason. I know he's going to slip out, but I'm going to say just a second to honor Jason. Jason Ball was a teacher in our school system. He's been my pastor, our associate pastor at Life Church in Cookeville, and then the Livingston Campus for the past four and a half years. And God has called him to Hendersonville, to a church there. And so he will be leaving Cookeville, and I just wanted to honor him. He meant so much to my family and I, and I appreciate you, and I know you will do wonderful work in Hendersonville, and don't come back to Cookeville anytime, okay?
All right. Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented, or are there any changes or corrections?
Yes, Mayor, we have two additions. Item seven F, which is Resolution 200611, and item seven G, which is Resolution 20612.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Stand there.
Motion, second, and discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you. Under old business, five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on June 4th, 2020. Is there a motion?
Stand there.
Second. Motion, second, and discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you. Five B, hold a public hearing. Consider on second read, final read, ordinance O200608, meaning allegiance of the general, state street day, solid waste, animal control, and general and prison bond fund in Cookeville for fiscal year in June 30, 2020. Ms. Ellington.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This ordinance is the final budget amendments for the fiscal 20-year budget. It is the second reading, and there have been no changes in the ordinance since first reading, and we have received no calls or comments, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Stand there.
Motion is second. Any discussion, no comment. Let's do a, we'll do a roll call vote, please, in this budget.
Councilman Walmsley.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Mayor Shelton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Aye.
Councilman Walker.
Aye.
Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you. Five C, hold a public hearing, consider on second and final reading, ordinance O200609, providing a tax levy for the 2020-21 fiscal year. Ms. Ellington.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance sets the property tax rate at 99 cents. There is no property tax increase recommended. 72 cents of it is being allocated to the general fund, 4 cents to the general obligation debt service fund, 15 cents to the transportation infrastructure fund, 3 cents to the economic development fund, 1 penny to the quality of life fund, and 4 cents to the solid waste fund. There have been no changes in the ordinance since first reading, and I would recommend your approval.
These are public hearings, and I want, if anyone wants to speak to these issues.
We're going to have one second.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the agenda is a whole public hearing.
Just a.
Okay. We've never done it on anything we've ever done on a second reading. But we'll open the public hearing portion. Does anyone want to speak to this now? Close the public hearing portion. Is there a motion?
Stand there.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Kathy.
Councilman Walmsley.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Mayor Shelton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Aye.
Councilman Walker.
Aye.
Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, hold a public hearing, consider on second and final reading, ordinance O200610, authorizing appropriations for financial aid to public service nonprofit and charitable organizations for the 2020-21 fiscal year. Ms. Ellington.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance appropriates $753,870 in support for 26 different local organizations. There have been no changes in the ordinance since first reading, and we have received no calls or comments on it, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have anyone that would like to speak on this matter? Public hearing, is there a motion?
Stand there.
Second. Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? Roll call, please, Kathy.
Councilman Walmsley.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Mayor Shelton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Aye.
Councilman Walker.
Aye.
Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you. Seven A, hold a public hearing, consider on second and final reading, ordinance O200611, adopting the city of Cookeville, Tennessee annual budget for fiscal year beginning of July 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2021. Ms. Ellington.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance will establish the operating budgets of all the various funds of the city for fiscal year '21, including our utility departments and the Cookeville Regional Medical Center Authority. There have been no changes since the first reading, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter? Close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Stand there.
Second. Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All right. Roll call, Kathy.
Councilman Walmsley.
Yes.
Councilman Miller.
Aye.
Mayor Shelton.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Aye.
Councilman Walker.
Aye.
Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you. Under, I'm telling you, the six A, consider ordering bits for chemicals for the water quality control department. Is there a motion?
Stand there.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you. Under business, seven A, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading, ordinance O200507, zoning code amendment relative to extending development approval expiration during a natural disaster or emergency declaration. John Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. During the recent COVID-19 pandemic, the planning department recognizes the need relative to development approval deadlines due to emergency or disaster declarations. The rapidly evolving situation with the pandemic resulted in a last-minute cancellation of our March 2020 planning commission meeting. If a development approval had been set to expire for the March meeting, the zoning code includes no provisions to address extensions due to extenuating circumstances. During this recent sacred home order, many professional businesses have operated limited capacities, and also it's disrupted several industry sectors. The planning department has prepared for consideration an amendment to the zoning code, section 233, administration and enforcement, to add a new section that would allow any pending approval expiration required by the zoning code to be extended by administrative approval by the planning department for six additional months. Requests for extensions due to natural disasters or emergency declarations must be submitted to the planning department prior to the expiration date. The request must include justification that the disaster or emergency declaration has impacted progress on a project, and an extension would be a reasonable accommodation. This proposed amendment was approved unanimously by the planning commission, as recommended by the planning department, and I respectfully ask for your approval.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing portion. Do we have anyone that would like to speak about this matter? Hold a public hearing. Is there a motion?
Stand there.
Okay.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seven D, consider approval of Blue Cross Blue Shield Employee Health Insurance Administrative Services Agreement. Ms. Ellington.
Mayor and council members, the city has a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee to service the administrators of our self-insured health plan. The contract is a three-year agreement that expires on June 30. The fees under the contract are $34.71 for medical and $403 for dental, and we pay an estimated $275,000 annually for this service. Our broker, McGriff Insurance, rejected quotes from other carriers. Aetna, Digna, and Humana declined to quote. United Healthcare did provide a quote, and McGriff analyzed the quote comparing admin fees and claim repricing, and the network discounts were significantly higher with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So we are recommending continuing with Blue Cross Blue Shield as a third-party administrator for our plan. The proposed contract for renewal is a three-year agreement starting July 1 of this year and ending June 30 of '23. They are proposing a three-year locked-in fee for medical. Year one and year two are the same as expiring, and there is a 3% increase in year three. There's also no increase in the broker commission. It will remain at $3, which is the expiring amount for the entire length of the contract. So the total medical fee for year one and year two will be $38.77, and will increase to $39.84 for year three. The proposed fee for the dental is locked in for the three years at $4.03, the same as the expiring amount. And the conditions for the contract, the majority of them are the same as the expiring contract, and they include a penalty for early cancellation, an amount of one-month fee, the right for Blue Cross to adjust the fee for significant changes in the plan, legislation or regulations, significant fluctuations in the number covered by our plan, measured by the number of employees and the ratio of members to subscribers. And it also requires participation in shared savings, which is where Blue Cross Blue Shield keeps a percentage of recovery for things like subrogation, class action suits, provider audits, and tort claims. So we are requesting your approval for the city manager to sign a three-year contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield to continue to be the third-party administrator of our health insurance plan.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Stand there.
Second. Motion is second. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider authorizing the prepayment of three variable-rate loans with the Tennessee Municipal Bonds Fund. Ms. Ellington.
Mayor and council members, the city of Cookeville debt obligations include three variable-rate instruments with the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. One is an obligation of the electric department, and the other two are obligations of the general government. The electric department note originated in October 2008 and has a final maturity of May of 2024. The current balance outstanding is $2,050,000. The general obligation note originated in October 2007 has a final maturity date of May 2023 and a current balance outstanding of $798,000. The general obligation note originated in December 2008 has a final maturity date of May 2024 and a current outstanding balance of $803,000. While variable-rate debt obligations have value, and the city has greatly benefited from low rates these obligations have had over the years, these obligations also carry risk. The financial markets have had volatile swings in the past few months due to the economic uncertainty caused by the pandemic, so we are requesting your approval to pay these three obligations off in full. The debt service fund and the electric department both are in a strong financial position to do so at this time, and thus eliminate this risk. While the potential savings and interest is unknown because of the variable rate, the fee saved will be just over $60,000. Fund balance in the debt service fund is around $14 million, and the electric department cash reserves are approximately $13.7 million, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Stand there.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions from the council? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Seven D, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the Double Springs Utility District. Jermaine Kelly.
Mayor and council, seeking authorization for the city manager to sign an agreement with Double Springs Utility District to buy a portion of their service area. The map you got up there, we serve some wholesale customers that surround the city. It's hard, it may be better to see on your screen than it is up there, but part of the Double Springs Utility District is within the city limits of Cookeville, and we currently do not serve them. Everybody else is with, is in the city. There may be a couple places down on Cookeville-Bogdok Road that we can't, we still don't have service to. This is the map of the area a little bit more detailed. It shows some of the areas that were annexed in the '70s and then '80s, '90s, '2000s, and going from there, the area in brown hatched is, we don't have a right to purchase that. We did have a right to purchase what was in purple, but we tried to combine it all to do it all at one time. So what we've ended up with is the area in purple, which is all the area inside the city limits, and included, got included in the agreement, the green portion, which is the county's recently purchased property, and an additional property that's down on, about there north of the interstate, at the interchange, that there's been a lot of interest in showing, so we wanted to try to go ahead and get it, because we figured it would develop at some point. So we got them to include that within their agreement. We have approval through the USDA, the Rural Development District, which is the regulatory authority that regulates. They've given approval. So basically, customers being acquired, 488 or 535 equivalent residential customers. There's a couple of, right, an industry out there, Hermes Hardwood. So we converted those, a bigger user, so we converted those even to an equivalent residential customer. Compensation for the customers being acquired is $655,911. Compensation for the facilities being acquired is 1.183740. So the total compensation we'll be paying to the district is $1,839 and $651. The district will transfer all the acquired customers on or before August 31, 2021. Cookeville will pay the district $200,000 upon execution of the agreement, and the remaining amount will be spread out over two equal payments of $818,227.50. The first payment would be due upon the transfer of the customers anticipated August 31, 2021, and one year after that payment's made, we would pay them the second payment. The district will provide us with all their customer information within two months of the agreement being signed. So this has been a long process. Dr. Walmsley was with us out there at the meeting several times, a long time ago, so it's good to get it behind us. Mr. Mills, I think, is happy.
This one?
So we would recommend approval, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Very much.
Stand there.
Second. Second. Any comments or questions?
I just want to congratulate you all on all your hard work and time and dedication to this, and finally getting serving citizens.
That's 15 years.
Oh, it's been going on.
A long time.
20 years.
Four, yeah, probably three city managers. Over now. It's been going on a long.
And James Mills kicked it in the garage.
I'm sure it does. Glad to see that. It's definitely can get all of our systems on that. 535 more customers. That's right. Cookeville.
Residential equivalent customers. It's really around 490, but then the two industrial hardwoods.
Okay.
It's got big water, so we converted those into a residence.
These customers will actually, he grew.
Yes.
In their water.
Yeah.
Very good. We have a motion, second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you. Seven E, consider approval of purchase bypass sewer pump for the water quality control department utilizing the HVAC bi-cooperative purchasing program.
Mayor and council, we are currently under contract to replace Little Creek Pump's pumping station. It's a tentatively scheduled eight or nine-month project. It has two pumps. One pump is out, recently went out. To replace it, it's a $20,000 item. Plus, it's probably an eight-week lead time, and if we purchased it, can't use it anywhere else. So we started looking around, a lease a pump, roughly $3,000 a month, though my operations carry, operations superintendent, started looking about purchasing a pump that we could use, that we can get here and set here for the eight months, but use on five of our other stations that we currently don't have the capability. We've got generators that we can use, but if the electrical goes out, we've got other pumps, but we have five stations for higher-capacity pumps that this one will use, that we can use this for. So we think it's in our department's best interest to purchase this and use it long-term instead of paying $20,000, $25,000 and not having anything at any of that time. So we'd recommend that, purchase that from Zilean, deep water installation, $76,985.20.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Seven.
Stand there.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Five B, this motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Set out, consider Resolution R200611, expressing appreciation for service rendered to the city of Cookeville by Gail Fowler, Director of Human Resources Department. So have a resolution we are going to read here. Whereas, beginning her illustrious career with the city of Cookeville in 1994, Gail Fluder Fowler embarked upon a journey of public service that would span over 26 years. And whereas remarkably, her career with the city began in the Human Resources Department as an administrative secretary, transitioning into the administration office as assistant to the city manager and council, before making full circle to her destination as the Human Resources Department Director. And whereas Gail's distinguished service is notable, as her dedication and loyalty to the city of Cookeville has included the pleasure of working with seven city councils over her tenure in the city manager's office, where she was a visionary and devoted to assisting in the movement of multiple large projects, being mentor fruition. And whereas her influence and assistance have been reflected in paramount projects that include the renovations of the council chambers at City Hall, the Highlands Business Park, the pet care campus, as well as many of the programs and benefits implemented for employees. And whereas as HR Director, Ms. Fowler has been steadfast in her dedication and commitment to the city employees, creating a culture of work family with her compassionate and caring attitude, her willingness to assist is demonstrated by her spirit and enthusiasm to be in a team environment, always at the ready to render a helping hand when any project or need arises. Whereas Gail's professionalism, work ethic, and mentorship is evident in the working relationships built over the years with city staff, the community, and organizations, contributing to the high level of respect and admiration her peers hold for her. And whereas being the quintessential public servant, her desire and willingness to be civic-minded is extended in the time and volunteer work she has graciously offered for many events and organizations, leaving a distinctive footprint in the community she has called home for so many years. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the employee and city council, sincere appreciation is hereby extended to Gail Fowler for her valuable service to the city of Cookeville, and best wishes are bestowed for her retirement. Now be it resolved, this shall be duly recorded today, June 18, 2020.
Thank you so very much. I can't begin to tell you what this journey has been. When it began, I never dreamed it would have come this way, but I'm honored and privileged and humbled to have worked with this wonderful group of folks and the councils that I've worked with that have allowed the vision to come. I can't thank you all enough. You'll always be part of my family, and I'll be around. And I'm available for volunteer work at this point in time. Thank you all so very much. I just, thanks, thanks, and that's good thanks about the staff that you have and that you give that staff the ability to do their good work, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
Gail, we appreciate you. We appreciate your service and love and dedication to the city, and it won't be the same without you around here, but we certainly appreciate it. Appreciate everything.
Well, thank you.
We're a better place for having you here.
It sounded pretty impressive what you all said.
Item seven G. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Right in a second. Any further comments from the council? We will, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five B, this motion carries.
Seven G, consider Resolution R0612, expressing appreciation for service rendered to the city of Cookeville by Cathy McLean, City Clerk. Whereas embarking on an expedition of public service in 1978, Cathy McLean has exemplified and embodied the term selfless service during her esteemed career spanning over 40 years with the city of Cookeville. And whereas Cathy's employees began in the general department, transitioned to administrative assistant to the finance director, all before being named Deputy City Clerk, leading her to the prestigious role of City Clerk. And whereas her devotion and dedication to the role of City Clerk has included being the symbol of many historical documents, custodian of official minutes of the city council meetings, and numerous all-important city documents, as well as the significance of her role in the management and collection of property and business taxes, Deputy City Clerk, and then City Clerk, which helped to fund the services this city's doing. And whereas Ms. McLean has had the privilege to work alongside and to the enjoyment of nine city councils during her tenure, exhibiting her knowledge and taking pride in the accuracy of meetings and agendas while following robust rule of order. And whereas Cathy demonstrates unsurpassed willingness to freely give her time and support to numerous organizations, her civic involvement over the years is exceptional, and a grand demonstration of her service heart and love of the community. And whereas Cathy's loyalty to the city is reflected in all she does, she is held in high esteem by all who have had the honor to work with her. Her exemplary career is one to be due and noted, as her ability, knowledge, and steadfastness over the years have contributed to the involvement, evolvement, and positive growth of the city, a wonderful place she is so proud to call home. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the employees and city council, deepest appreciation is hereby extended to Cathy McLean for her valuable 40 years of service to this great city, and best wishes are bestowed at her retirement. Cathy, we love you. We appreciate you, and we wish you the very best in your retirement.
Thank you.
That concludes our agenda portion. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there a motion?
Stand there.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You may record your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I said, thank you, anybody else I'd rather go with than you, Mayor.
That concludes our agenda portion of the meeting. We have, now we make time for citizens that want to address the council on my agenda items. Couple points of order. We will have a 15-minute comment period. Anyone that would like to address the council, you step to the podium, state your name and address, a statement that may hold importance, or you may make on items of general relevance. Once the timer sounds, you wrap up your comment. Comments should be directed to the entire council and not individual members. Do we have anyone that would like to address the council?
Hi. My name is Danielle Diogues-Dino, and I live in Monterey. I'm with the Youth for Inclusion Initiative, that's Y double I, and we organized a peaceful protest on June 2nd, and we followed through with that protest on June 6th. We partnered with the Tech Democrats to organize the protest today. Though there is a lot of action we want to see happen, we understand more homework and organization needs to happen before we can do them, and we are not giving up on those actions, just refining them. We are excited about your resolution to support Black Lives Matter, but your words will mean nothing if they are not followed by action. We would like to know what concrete steps the city council is planning on taking to dismantle systematic racism in Cookeville.
We received comments. There's no comment back from us, so we'll receive your comments. You have three minutes.
Well, I would just like to say, we do have demands that we know aren't reachable yet. We haven't done enough homework. We need a little bit more organization. But we do want to ask you what we know we can get from the city council. And one of those things is the removal of the Confederate monument in the city cemetery and the abolishment of chokeholds used by our police stations. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anything from the council?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The previous city council, the previous city council of which Mayor Shelton and I were a part of, took over the management of the Buck Family Cemetery four years ago. I think that is a testament that black lives do matter in Cookeville.
Thank you, Councilman Wallach.
Got something I want to say. So the Confederate monument in the city cemetery is not owned by the city of Cookeville. It's a bachelor's home plot. Yes, I disagree with what it said on it. They weren't the greatest fighting force ever assembled. They were beat by the Union Army, beat them. So I would say the Union Army, and not take them. It's the best fighting force ever assembled, so.
We're adjourned.